Come now to the adoption of the agenda. And before we do, Ms. Donnell has asked to pull 7.02. She has several questions on it. Also, on the personnel recommendations, 12.01, number six. There is some information that she still is lacking. So, we need to pull those two for separate discussion and so forth.
Oh, 7.02, all of them?
7.02.
Which one?
Well, actually, it's the student progression, right? Number one, I think it is, yeah, number one. And 12.01, number six. Okay, anything else? If not, do we have a motion and second that we accept to approve the agenda? Ms. Carlton and Ms., what's your name?
Agner.
Agner. Okay. We come now to the approval of our past minutes. Number one is July the 22nd, regular school board meeting.
I got a quick question, though. It's on one of the minutes, and I can't remember which minutes where we pulled supplementals. But I can't remember which minute it was. It was something, it was one of those where we had to pull.
I did make a notion or a motion at the bottom and said that you were pulling until, and so we made a note on it.
Okay.
I do recall that, and it is in the minutes.
Okay, alright.
I don't remember which meeting it was either.
I can't either.
Okay. Alrighty, so we have a motion by Ms. Carlton, a second by Ms. Agner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye abstain. I was out of town that week. I'd board meeting on the July the 29th, regular school board meeting, public hearing, and executive session. Ms. Agner, or did you, Ms. Agner and Ms. Carlton. Ms. Agner makes the motion, Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye abstain due to sickness. And then August the 5th, regular school board meeting.
Mathis?
Okay. It's on that, it was.
Mathis and Ms. Agner makes the motion and second. All in favor say aye. And aye abstain there again due to sickness. Okay. Alrighty. We do have a presentation this evening by Ms. Mathis, and she's just going to discuss historical landmark distinction for the old rock building. So, Ms. Mathis, it's your floor.
Thank you. So, I did some research and I got some help locally from the Historical Society and from Jill who had some, who told me about an elementary school in Saltchoppy that is a historical landmark. The school board went down that road with them. And so, briefly, in our packet, you'll see that there is a national registry for historic buildings. It's not state, it's all national. And so, the criteria to become one is something that we, to be eligible a property must be at least 50 years old, be associated with important events or people, represent a distinctive architectural site or master architect, and include underrepresented styles. The benefits of being a historic building are public recognition and honor, eligibility for federal and state grants, access to tax initiatives and incentives, protection from federally funded projects. What are the restrictions and what is the flexibility? And so, there is, there are no federal restrictions unless federal funds are involved. Local ordinances do apply. You'd have to follow your city and county ordinances. And the owners may renovate, remodel, or sell freely. Major altercations may lead to delisting. The financial incentive incentives are a federal tax credit, Millsat, and grants that are available at the federal, state, and local levels. It does not reduce the property value. Renovations and energy upgrades are allowed. And design reviews typically don't regulate paint color or hidden features. So, the Saltchoppy Elementary School contacted the school board, and what happened was in 2001, the Waukesha County School Board deemed it not necessary for public education, public use, the way we've done with our rock building. And so, the local high school superintendent, his name at the time, his name is Jason Griggs, he's not there anymore, but he and a group of people within the district wanted to see that school saved and preserved. And they did the paperwork, and there is a lot of paperwork involved that they told me. Really nice man, he's very fond of you, Jill. So, there is a lot of paperwork involved in becoming a historic site. And, but they did get it. And in the years since then, the 24 years, they have gotten grants in the amount of $100,000, state grants, those have a 50% match. They've gotten several grants in the millions, federal grants, and those have a 25% match. It's, they have created a beautiful building. If you ever get a chance to look at it or see it, they preserved it, and they're very proud of it and rightfully so. And when I talked to them, I told them I needed a list of pros and cons to come back to our board with, and they couldn't think of a single con. They said it had, every experience they had over this 24 years has been all pro that they've saved their building, they've got a, you know, beautiful place for their community to use, and they're really happy with the work that they've done. But something occurred to me during that time. And so, I think that I would love to see this building. I think all of y'all that know me know, I want to, I would love to see it become a historical landmark. But we need to, we need to move forward intentionally. Through the years, they have struggled with the use of the building. Like, they have this beautiful building with millions of dollars put into it, but they've struggled to find a home within it for other organizations like. So, we can't do that. We can't afford to do that. So, I feel like we need to move intentionally forward and create a building that has a purpose. It has a past, it has a present, and it needs to have a future. And so, when we look at it, that future cannot be a financial burden for the taxpayers. So, we need a building with a purpose that is cost effective. And we need to take that into consideration straight out of the gate. We don't need to be 25 years down the road and still looking for a way to make this work. So, because of that, I would like to request a workshop. I've talked to Reggie about this already. And with our local stakeholders, county government, city government, organizations, individuals, anyone who has a thought or an idea of how we proceed with a purpose for the future of this building. If the board is on board with that workshop where we discuss the future of the rock building, and we listen to public input and local government, and they talk to us about it and keeping, you know, the historical.
I make a suggestion that before we have a workshop, before we invite people in, we actually know what we're inviting them into. We know what is available, what can be done, how much would it cost? Would it cost, or would it all be grant funded? And it makes sure that those grant fundings have no ties, strings.
You mean the historical landmark designation?
Well, there's more than just historical landmark designations. There's more grants, I understand, than that. So, that's why I have Melanie listening in tonight. For y'all that don't know, Melanie Cox is listening, so in case we go forward.
Right, I forgot to tell y'all that. She's right here, she's on mute, she's gonna chime in if we need her, though.
She's gonna listen and, you know, get back with us. And I think we need to do our homework instead of bringing in a bunch of people to listen. I think we really need to do the homework. It's like, we can take this lane, or we can take this lane.
Okay.
And you see what I'm saying?
So, we need to have a workshop, or not a workshop? We just need to put it on the, on the agenda for discussion at a future board meeting?
We need to have people like the Historical Society and Melanie Cox and whoever the grant writers are, whether it be, you know, whoever has that ability to write the grants, that knows what is out there, that what is available. It's kind of like, I'm gonna compare this to my daily work that I do. There's, the government puts out things like, where I work, cost shares. The landowners come and say, I want to be part of that. I want to take my land and I want to put it in this, and get those, get that money that's available. So, that's what I want to look at is what is available out there. And it, and I'm sure that probably the pools of money change on a regular, but I'm not sure of that. That's the reason I wanted Melanie in on the conversation. I understand what you're saying, and that's wonderful. I appreciate what you've done, but we really ain't got but saying we want to pursue something, but we don't know what.
Right, so that's, I think we're saying the same thing.
So, I think the board needs to have a workshop to achieve what you're saying for us to figure out what we're gonna do before we go to the public saying we want public input.
Wait, wait, listen. We have already deemed this building no longer useful for educational purposes. We have already taken ourself out of that, saying we are the school board. This is what we have decided. So, when we did that, and Angela is on the phone, what, what from this point can we do and say?
Well, we still have jurisdiction over the building. I mean, we might, the superintendent might have expressed his concerns.
Which they did do that in Saltchoppy, the district does still own that. But so, and do we, and this is what I'm saying, from talking to them, if we do that route and we get grants and we see what's out there and what's available, we still need to know what the future of the building is.
Oh, I agree 100%.
Future use of that building. If we're gonna seek grants and we're gonna get money to put into it, what is the future use that we're seeking that money for?
Only if we keep it, if we keep it.
If we keep it, or if we decide, you know what, this is beyond us, we might want to allow somebody else to step in and do that work.
So, we wouldn't want to have, we wouldn't want to invite people to give us ideas about things like that at the workshop that we have?
Well, let's see what's out there first.
Okay.
Let's see what's available.
I think we're saying the same thing. I'm saying I would like for everyone to join in and have a very transparent discussion in the daylight where everybody is saying, I'd like to see this, this, and this, and we're all on the same page about the future.
At this point, we don't know what's out there.
Right.
So, we don't even know that we can do anything with the public.
Okay.
Why don't we do this, and that is, do some research, I guess, but, you know, come back next board meeting, and hopefully our attorney will be here. I was understanding from her talking about this, that, you know, really, we needed a workshop. And, and to be able to see what kind of interest there might be in the community as far as other, maybe some other governmental identities and so forth that might see a need and a use for part of that building or the buildings that are there.
But y'all don't see the need for that workshop?
Oh, yeah.
You do? And that's what I'm asking for is why, because I'm confused.
I think Bonnie said we need to do some pre-work so that we have a few answers before we get to that meeting.
I mean, we could have a bunch of people out here looking at us saying, ah, okay, we'd like to do this, okay?
I think, Jeanie, I understand that, but I think Jeanie is asking, in order to do the pre-workshop, how do you want to have that? Do you want to have that in a workshop setting, or do you want to just discuss it at a meeting?
Melanie's got a question.
Okay, Melanie, go ahead, just once, go ahead.
Is the building already on the state historic register? Does it have a master site file number?
No, no, it hasn't, no application has been filed.
Okay, you would want to do that before you apply for the national historic register? Getting your state designation first is really important because that application will need a master site file number. And if you decide to move forward, the state application isn't that difficult. But, but your first step would be getting that state designation, and that would be a good thing to have anyway, whether you should decide to move forward with, you know, whatever your dreams are for that building, just having a master site file through the state would be a good, it would be a good idea. There are no restrictions other than if you did like a major structural renovation type to that facility. But I would really recommend that you pursue that first because that will help you with your national designation, all your grants, with anything you want to do on it.
Thank you, Melanie.
Okay.
So, again, are we doing this workshop, or y'all want to put this on agenda for a meeting discussion? Bonnie?
I think we need to have a workshop, board workshop. Board workshop, get some ideas from the superintendent. He's got some ideas, everybody's got some ideas on this board.
So, y'all want to do something internal before we open it to the public? But we have to do it in a public setting? Okay, so are you ready to take a motion on this?
I think Reggie wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to know and have an idea of what we're talking about money-wise, because it's gonna be a lot of refurbishing, a lot of work going into fixing it up based on having it be a landmark, you know.
Well, I think when we do the workshop.
I want to see dollars. I want to see money, because that's the whole issue to start with is we've got a building sitting there that's costing us $97,000 a year.
And we just put a half of a million in it, so.
Right, we need to figure out, you know, dollars. What's it gonna cost us if we do this?
Yeah.
And I think there's, apparently, there's grant funding obviously available to help us with that, but we need a bigger, a better picture of what that's gonna tell us.
Okay.
Plus, I'm curious to know if we need to leave the rock building with the rest of the building, or we need to separate them out?
Can you say the rest of the building?
The rest of the back yard.
The property, the rest of the property. So, Danny, do you need a motion?
When were they built?
Do you need a motion?
I'm sorry?
Are you ready for a motion? Okay, so I motioned that we have a board workshop where we can address the concerns of Bonnie as well as the superintendent, and we just have some real discussion as a board, what, where we at and what we would like to do with that building prior to going to the public to a meeting. So, I put that motion on the table.
Well, it's not so much that I want it to be, we're making the decision and we're gonna tell the public. What we want to be able to do when the public does show up is say, these are the things that we know that are available. And they have some information for them when they do come. Because, I mean, I wouldn't want to waste my time to come to a meeting and nobody know anything.
Alright, so do we want to do that? Do y'all, is y'all trying to do a meeting by the next board meeting? Or do you want to say sometime in October? Like, what are you thinking? Bonnie?
Melanie, let me ask, ask her, Jeanie, if she's available to.
She's on there.
Ask her if she's available to help us get our act together before we have a.
Melanie, would you be available to help us get our act together before the, before we do our workshop?
Sure, just give me a call, I'll help you in any way I can.
Okay, we'll work, we'll work with your time schedule then to schedule our workshop and take your advice as we move forward.
Just give me a call whenever you want, and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there. And I can give you some recommendations on funding sources and, you know, I might give you a different take on how you might want to go about it too.
Okay, thank you, Melanie.
You're very welcome.
Alright.
And Mr. Anderson, I think you will probably play a big role in that workshop too as well if you can be there. You know probably as much about that building as any of us, so.
Would it not be just as maybe appropriate to ask Melanie if she could come and just present to us at their next board meeting? The scope of how to go about seeking these grants or what may be out there? I mean, I know that there's interest in different ways. I've had several of the folks of our community to talk to me about the site. I think there's interest out there, but now, I know we're just all standing and wondering, well, which way do we go, or how do we start this process? And, you know, I know that we're, one is saying we need to see what we can do in grants.
And I'm the opposite of that. I feel like we need a purpose before we know what we need in grants.
Grants are the grants, you don't make, you don't make, you don't make the purpose for the grant. You make, the grant makes.
But I think you also got to keep in mind like what the superintendent is saying.
But I mean, if that's the way the board chooses to go, is to look at grants and see what grants we can get, that's one thing. But in my mind, we need a purpose.
Well, I think, I think, I think that there is, I think the purpose, there are purposes that can be utilized over there, I really think so. But, you know, we've said, that place is old, we've said it's not conducive for use. But, and so now, we, you know, we've said all of that.
But it's worth saving.
Yep, and, 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 you know, we're paying close to $100,000 a year on insurance and everything else for that place. So, you know, we've got to find our reasoning and purpose, you know, really honestly.
Yeah, because if we say we're, it's not for school purpose and we don't have a use for it, why are we coming up with another purpose?
Right, we, we don't, that's why I'm saying we need to have local organizations come in and say, you know, and the board has to make a decision about what to do with it.
So, can we table this to the first meeting in October?
I mean, I just, I just, you know, towed out there maybe having a presentation by Ms. Cox about, about, you know, the possibility of, of grants and what grants might do, you know.
The main thing is that we keep it an asset for the, for Taylor County and for the taxpayers of Taylor County. It's a $2 million piece of property. We don't want to just throw around. I mean, we need to consider everyone in.
Well, we could discuss that at a workshop. So, do we want to do this workshop in September or October?
Is it a grant workshop, or is it a?
Just for us to have some formal, yes, for direction, I meant formal discussion as to what we would like to achieve.
I, I really think you can merge both of them together because you have the interest of knowing whomever, whomever might consider having a purpose for that over there. Then, I'm sure that, and I would think that it more than likely could be some interest in some of our governmental, other governmental bodies. That's been a little bit of little birds flying here and there.
As long as they're gonna take on their expense, I don't have a problem with that.
So, and I don't know many, you know, how, no more than I, you know, talked to our board attorney about this, and she said the very first thing is to, for us to have a workshop, you know, and in that workshop, of course, she was taking Ms. Mathis' lead that first of all, we need to send out letters to our governmental agencies, inviting them to come and, and then see what, see what's out there, what interest is out there, what purpose there may be out there.
So, do y'all think we can achieve that by September or October?
September.
Okay, you want it in the first or the second meeting, Superintendent?
Sooner the better, yeah.
Okay, so you need a motion for us to just put it on the next meeting?
Do a workshop now, what are we workshopping? Is it both?
Yes.
Information on grants and also on the interest?
Yeah, because I mean, you don't, you can't take action at a workshop, no way. So, I think that's fine.
Listen, the interest is not us. We deemed it unusual, unusable for educational purpose. So, when we're taking, I'm talking about the future purpose.
I think we deemed it unusual, yeah, we deemed it unusable. However, I think we also need to keep in mind that we just spent $750,000. When the superintendent brought it up, he was saying it's a sale, so that could have turned a profit. So, I mean, I think we just need to keep that in mind to the money we don't put in the building. So, he said the first meeting is September.
She's saying for them to take it back. You have a nice day. You know, we're not doing that. We're gonna do what's best for the district and the community.
Yeah, what's gonna profit us, because I mean, the idea the superintendent had would have turned a profit, so.
But the people of Taylor County own it, yeah.
Melanie, you have something?
Melanie, go ahead.
What you may want to consider, this is just a suggestion, is in your workshop, and you can discuss this in your workshop, but you may, if you all agree that you want to do something with the building, you may want to go on and get it on the registers, especially your state master site file. You may want to do that. And you may then want to turn around and you can go to Department of Commerce, and they have planning grant funding. There's no match for them, there's no match. And get a planning grant and actually hire, you know, an outside firm to help you adequately plan what the use is, what the public wants, what your board wants, what you all want, and they will actually help you plan it and do some design work on the future for it. But, but you may want to consider moving forward with a, a planning grant if you want to do this structure, because that could help you substantially. And it would help you then, give you the tools on what you need to get grants to actually make it happen. But planning grants are great because like I said, there's, there's no match on those. And it sure could, and they hold stakeholder meetings. Whatever consulting firm you would select can hold stakeholder meetings and, you know, do public presentations to get what the public wants. So, that might be something you really want to consider if you want to move forward with this structure, you know, this project.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Danny, I think Dan made a comment that we, everybody didn't hear.
He has not sold money into a rock building. We're already talking about it, it's a rock building, money into the roofs of other buildings, rock building, you know, the city.
Gotcha.
As far as I know, no.
But the comment I was making was that all of it is considered one site now. We might need to think about separating.
The comment I was making was when the superintendent was talking about selling the property, to my understanding, you wanted to sell the whole property, right Superintendent? Exactly, so whether, that was my concern, we at least would have received something. But if that's not the case anymore, and if there is concern about if we're gonna keep the property as a whole or separate, I just think we need to do the workshop and we can receive more information from Melanie, and then we as a board could come to the table with more ideas, as well as the superintendent could express what his concerns are.
And understand that if it is deemed a historical landmark, it can never be torn down.
No, it can be.
Okay, so we got questions.
From what I've read.
One question presents another question, so.
I've made the motion, we waiting on a second.
I'm not sure, Reggie, but from what I read.
The superintendent said September, so.
One more thing. In these grants to refurbish or to make this, is there a grants there that's gonna pay that $97,000 a year for us until that time?
That would be a question.
I think, I think what we're, we're all trying to go down the same road, but that's a tax burden on the people, and what we're, what we're trying to do is preserve the building. But yet, we're not in the, we're not in the position to be able to do anything. And so, really honestly, what's out there, or what the question is, is, is there interest out there from somebody else in our community for that building? And hopefully, to be able to keep it as a historical site.
Yes, and there is. There are some public entities that have asked about the possible use of it for some county offices.
What, would that take care of $97,000?
Well, that's, that's the million dollar question.
And you know, there's, there's also like a big part of me, like if you're talking about other people taking over the property, or, I mean, and we're talking about the future of the building, like with Gladys Moore's, with Jerkins. I mean, this is not something that we haven't done in the past as far as having a school building that's no longer used for educational purposes, but went out into the community to serve the community. So, it's not something that's rocket science here for us. But it was before my time on the board, maybe Brenda was here for some of it? Were you?
No, oh, that was, that was before mine.
So, it's, it's not something that, you know, is completely unheard of, undone, you know?
So, Danny, you have a motion by Deidra.
Yeah, but we set a date.
The superintendent said he wanted it sooner the better, so he said September. So, do, I asked him, did he want to do the first or the second meeting? And he said the sooner the better. You want to do the first meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Third is September?
Yes, ma'am.
The second, Bonnie Sue, isn't it? Is it the second?
The second?
The ninth, September ninth?
But don't we?
Oh, so we missed the first week.
We're gonna skip to.
Yeah, there's another one.
The second, yeah, September 2nd, is on a Tuesday.
Yeah, the Labor Day is Monday, and then the 2nd is the Tuesday.
That's our regular board meeting, the 2nd.
Yeah, I headed the 2nd.
Yeah, the next board meeting is the 2nd.
Perfect.
So, do you want to do it the 2nd?
Please.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we gonna have a workshop on the 2nd.
Because we normally do our board meetings the 1st and 3rd Tuesday.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? So, we skipped that first week because of the budget?
So, is the 9th the date you're going? So is the ninth the date you're going with? Brenda?
I'm with me.
Okay, we'll do the ninth. So we're not doing the second, we're doing the ninth because we're not meeting on the second due to the board meeting on the ninth.
And five fifteen?
Yeah.
Melanie, can you call in and talk to us or come and talk to us?
I can call in that day. I, I have stuff at the top of the agenda for the county board meeting that day, but I'll call in at five fifteen. And I will get some information to you on, um, different funding cycle options, um, before that time.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Melanie.
You're very welcome.
We're gonna have the workshop in, in the same timeframe as the board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna have a workshop on this, on the ninth of September. Okay, motion being made by Ms. Dunell, seconded by Ms. Carlton. If we're in favor of that, even though everybody's agreeable with it, okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, this brings us down to items of interest by the public. Anybody here that would like to address the board at this time, this would be your opportunity. Uh, do we have anyone? Uh, if not, um, we have, um, all the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda except for the ones that we pulled. And we will get to those right here shortly. But first of all, we have item four point one oh, uh, which is an action slash discussion item, uh, board travel. So.
I have a question on this though. Um, can I ask what these, the figures that's on here? Is this just, um, figures you went with in the past test? Because I didn't go nowhere in June. Okay. All right. So I just wanted to make sure that's noted that I didn't attend travel. I didn't, shouldn't have been no registration or anything. And if it was, it was counseled.
Right. And I think all of us is the same way. There's some that we didn't do. But, uh, I'm the one to ask it to come, be put back on here because I had intended and it just slipped by me to ask that we cut this. Again, we asked for other cuts in the district and I'm, I'm, I'm proposing to cut it by twenty percent.
Absolutely.
So I would be prepared to make.
Everybody seems to be in agreement with that.
Okay, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Carlton. Uh, Ms. Carlton makes that a motion, uh, board travel be cut twenty percent for the coming new year. And Ms. Mathis seconds that. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. And then this brings us down to the, uh, one of the, or actually both of them, I understand, go together.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, consent item seven point oh two, number one, student progression plan. Uh, Ms. Dunell had that. She had some questions or, and so Ms. Dunell.
Jill, was you planning to present on this? Okay. Well, my question was at the last meeting, um, I asked a question in regards to the alternative program. The only thing that was referenced in here in regards to alternative was at the middle school. Um, I think Ms. Roberts and you as well, Ms. Jill stated that that was coming out. And I see where it has been marked out. But tonight on the personnel recommendations, I see we're making an appointment for instructional positions in regards to the alternative teacher. So I guess I was trying to want some clarity on where we at because I know back in twenty-one or twenty-two, I thought we done away with alternative. And so I don't recall anything coming back to the board in regards to us doing anything. So I guess I'm trying, I don't know superintendent, but it's on the personnel recommendations in regards to an instructional appointment at the high school.
So where would they be appointed to is what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm just asking if we don't, if it's not in our progression plan in regards to alternative education, then where, where, what do we need a teacher for?
Reggie, you could call this in the middle school and the high school, ask for an alternative teacher housed at their school. Um, Ms. Roberts, they came back and said she thought she would be fine without one. That they would be housed at their school and oversee those students.
So is, if that's the plan, then why are we taking it out of the progression plan? Why doesn't it reference that?
Out was whenever we had it from TAS. So we really do need to probably have it. We're gonna have, like you're saying, something in there.
My thing is this is going to the state and this is information our parents are supposed to have. So again, my concern is, what are we doing? I don't have a problem if this is something they're interested in, but I do not want parents in the state and us as board members not aware of what we're doing in our schools. This stuff got to be budgeted. I mean, so what's the plan?
So I think, one that was in there before that I believe we wanted to come out was that when we had TAS and it for some reason never got taken out of the people progression plan. That it need to be there somewhere at the school. But I see what you're saying. We do need to probably have something back in there since we're gonna house it at a different, at your own site.
Well, I think we need to know what we're doing. First of all, it seemed like y'all got an idea of what we're doing, but nothing has came to the board in regards to what the interest is or what your plan is. Do y'all mind coming? Because I mean, we are recording this in the public, so.
So the, the theory behind what we're doing is to try to make sure that everybody is most successful in the setting they need to be in without having to go to the board for expulsion and making sure that they're getting the classes or things that they need set up for what they need in their learning environment. And then hopefully moving back into the gen ed setting. So, or, or regular setting or whatever it is they need to take that time out for a minute to regroup, get back on track and then get back into their classroom. Do I absolutely agree that it should be in people progression, people progression plan? Yes, ma'am. Thing that was oversight on all of our parts because we weren't thinking it was, when we had alternative setting previously, it was at a different building altogether and it was set up as a school. Um, this is our way of trying to make sure that everybody is most successful and giving them an opportunity to improve and get back on track.
And that's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with that. I just would like us to have the information and the public to have the information. So, I mean, I'm gonna ask that we pull this again and y'all make the necessary adjustments and it come back to the board. I understand that, but you wiped the language out of this plan and it's not in the plan. So I just, if we're gonna do whatever y'all are planning to do, I would like that language in the progression plan since it is regarding student success and how they could be successful academically. So I, I just would like to motion we pull this and they adjust it and we bring it back for approval.
Make the correction that needs to be made. And make sure each school is representative that's going to be doing it.
The question, and is it in the staff and that authorization?
That's why I asked about the budget, so.
Okay. All right.
Lacey, do you know? So. So it's not part of the staffing plan for the middle or the high school? No, we hadn't approved it. It is not a part of what we've approved.
How many are there going to be?
You just got one on the agenda tonight.
Just one? At the middle school?
No, at the high school.
High school.
But you said you're anticipating another?
Well, Ms. Roberts had indicated that she may need something.
What did we do for Ms. Roberts last year?
She didn't have anything.
Yes, she did. She had a staff in her staffing plan, I believe, or wasn't it an add-on? It was in her staffing plan. She petitioned and those students rotated in and out, I believe. They traveled together like any other class, but they were all in the, in class together. They still just traveled. It was just one of my instructional petitions. Those kids just traveled together. They were still in the gen, but the general population, they wasn't like.
Well, I guess I'm confused if she had something down. Again, why do we even take any language out of here?
Because they've taken out the TAS.
I get that, but I don't think what was specified in here was TAS. It was just specify alternative ed.
Just needed to reword it.
So I motioned tonight that we pull this and they figure out what they're gonna do far as what and it come back to the board.
Miss Dunell, you've heard what Ms. Dunell desires was to care of the board.
I second that motion.
The document needs to be corrected. It's a typo error basically is what it is. The language was left out. And I mean, we're asking for an add-on, but the middle school's not changing from last year.
They may.
Well, they'll have to come. That'll be later on. But right now, the only thing that we're addressing is the high school.
So is, is it alternative? Because if we can staff how we want to staff our teachers.
What, what Ms. Brennan just presented is that y'all want to do a certain setting for these students y'all have identified that need this different setting. So I would think that would be considered an alternative setting.
I think of it like a similar like during an O T I, we don't have like a, I mean, I see what you're saying kind of, but I guess I think of it, if it's our position, just like I did last year, I didn't have it good enough people progression plan that these child, the kids were gonna travel together. They're still with my gen ed population. They're not like isolated. Or mine wouldn't have been. Mine would have been.
So if a parent comes in or the state comes in, you're gonna be able to address that from this plan? But as it is right now?
I mean, what are you telling those parents? I mean, because this is for the parents in regards to. So what are you telling them?
Last year, I always remember being at the parent's, because I remember one of my parents about it. I said that we went based on referrals and stuff like that, that they.
Well, I think there was language in there last year. It's just you wiping it out this year. So that's the concern.
Or the student had gotten behind and they can get more caught up if they're on their academic, like they're a years behind. That helped them be in there. They wouldn't, their work was a little bit different. They can get caught up and get to the regular cohort or whatever they wanted. We could add something. I don't mind doing that. If y'all want something that.
I just think you, if you're doing what Ms. Brennan just presented, I think there need to be language to speak to that. And it needs to be in here, so.
But the issue we have is apparently, it looks like that, uh, the teacher has already.
No, I pulled it tonight because that wasn't on the agenda the last time. Well, that's why I'm pulling it. Because at the last meeting, I, I asked this question, Brenda. And again, I'm, I can't do, I asked the question the last time and they said it wasn't gonna be nothing. So I don't, that's why I asked the question.
Well, what, what your concern is, major concern, is that, that it's in black and white for the parents to be.
Yeah, I would like for us as a community to be aware. I mean, if this is how you feel like these students would be the most successful, I think there should be information to support that.
Right, right. Okay, so you're, you're, of course, Ms. Ms. Mathis has said, I already seconded over here, but you're, you're proposing what now?
We pull this and they put the language in it in regards to what's the plan?
Progression plan, have we, we haven't started printing or anything or anything out there for anybody? Uh, okay. So, um, to, to, to put in there, in the progression plan, some, something concerning the possibility from school to school of an alternative setting. Uh, every school may not have it, but, you know, if it's needed, then it's needed. But the parents need to know that, you know, if it happens to be, you know, their child and it, you know, they need to know that, okay, it's, you know, it's possible that it can happen.
You got dropout prevention language in here, but again, you specified on here alternative. And again, our parents need to be aware. I think the board need to be aware because the board was under pressure and we went away from this. So that's my concern is I thought we went away from alternative ed. So if there's been discussion amongst operation for it to return, I would think that needs to come to the board. I don't think it's an issue, but again, like I say, we want to do what's in the best interest of the students.
Is it listed under the dropout prevention?
No, it's not from what she just presented.
Specifically dropout prevention, these kids have gotten so far, they're, they're almost done, but we make the mistake we, we, yes, they are not being successful in the setting. And so you, you have to these options of expulsion, dropout, or let's try to do it and finish strong in a different setting.
Well, I mean, I, you know, me personally.
That sound different than dropout.
Try, try to clean this up. I'd rather, I'd rather see dropout prevention because that's basically what you're trying to do instead of using the word alternative.
It's not an alternative setting. It is in the same school. It's not going somewhere other than where they already are. So that's the word alternative. When people hear that now, they remember back and they think that they're going somewhere else. So I think we need, I'm, I'm with Danny on that.
But you think that, that we should change the, um, title of the position to a dropout prevention teacher instead of alternative? But I mean, that, I mean, that's, and that's where the issue comes.
Well, that's the way she just presented it. Right. But that's what I'm saying. When I read as far as dropout prevention, I read what we've already read. I, what the language has always been. But when I read for alternative is what you just stood up here and said that y'all was trying to do an alternative setting for these students to get them back on track. And then if they're on track, then they would go back into the general population.
So we, I think we're talking about the same, you're trying to, try to get, we got the same goal in mind. It's just how we've used words. And so like Ms. Carlton said, should we not? And I think that we do. Instead of alternative, it should be dropout prevention. That would clear, clear up what, what, what you're, you're, what you're saying.
Whatever their plan is, I just want this to reflect that.
Does it say dropout prevention?
But that's what I'm saying. When you read what's on the dropout prevention, that was different from the language that y'all had far as alternative language. That's what I'm saying. I don't have a problem with what the plan is. I just want it to be in this progression plan. If there's gonna be alternative route in regards to the students that's been identified as behind or need a different setting, the progression plan should speak to it.
Okay, so what we need to do to clear up and, you know, any cloudiness.
I think what we're talking about here is, is maybe a little different from all of it. What we have are some students that are on their last leg from being expelled. We have Mr. Ryan's retired dean from number of years that's agreed to come in half day, run this alternative setting to help these kids stay on task, stay out of trouble, get their work done. So hopefully they can graduate and at the same time, uh, keep these kids from facing the ultimate, which is expulsion.
So it's a dropout program?
It's a dropout.
That sounds very different than dropout.
Dropout. It's basically, to me, it's, it's an alternative setting to give these oppor, kids an opportunity to get their education before they get expelled. It's their last step before coming before the board.
Okay, then you're gonna.
Parents, all parents know it.
If you're going with alternative setting, then you gotta redo it.
Within the school.
Dropout prevention program, then you don't have to redo it. Just that simple.
I don't think there's nothing wrong with what you're suggesting. I just want it identified.
He wants it, and I disagree.
I want it identified because again, we do this every year. And if there's been discussion, I don't understand why it's not in here. If you're doing something alternative for a population or group of students, I don't know why it's not in here. Especially if ultimately it's for their success.
Right. If it's in there as dropout prevention, then list it as dropout prevention. But that's what we're doing is trying to keep these kids from, from being expelled. Dropout prevention. That's already in the progression plan. Let's just leave it that, as that.
If I change the position title, don't I have to bring that back to the board?
Well, well, this, you know, if we have to do such that we have to, but. Well, this, you know, if we have to do such that we have to, but what's being addressed here, it, we're all, we're talking about the same thing, it's just the two words that has been used, dropout and alternative. But I think most everybody's agreeing, and, you know, that, that it is trying to keep students from dropping out of school, trying to save them. So it is a dropout prevention. But we just need to name the instructor, his position, not alternative, but we need to name it for what it is, a dropout prevention.
But I agree with Kiki. It's probably got to be readvertised, because it's different.
I think there's a misinterpretation of the word alternative. It's not an alternative school.
Okay, Ms. Ball, Ms. Ball?
And Ms. Roberts may wanna speak to that further, but there is a distinct, uh, term of art about alternative setting and education that is provided in that setting and for what reason.
She said that Jill might wanna talk about interchangeable for those words. Yeah, uh, they're not the same, but she said you might wanna talk about. So it is a dropout.
So Angela needs to address, do I need to readvertise, recreate?
Angela, did you hear that? So the issue?
I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I think that was Kiki I just heard, and then I heard Jill's comment. Um, my point is, if you're gonna adopt this student progression plan and you're using the term alternative education, um, that needs to be consistent. That appears to be what the job is identi, identified to be presently. So you can't just interchange the word dropout prevention in your pupil progression plan and then say, oh, this, this is titled alternative education, but we really meant dropout prevention. So to Kiki's question, yes, if you're going to change the title in your student progression plan and call that a dropout prevention, then yes, that is not how the position was advertised, nor is it how, how it is identified on the master list, as I understand it. That position number is tied to an alternative education position. Isn't that correct?
Well, the simplest thing to do then is to put that in the progression plan instead of readvertising a job and having a re, possibility rehiring somebody. Put the wording in the progression plan and bring it back. That'd be the simplest thing to do. You agree?
I agree.
Reggie? I mean, we, we don't have a choice at this point, unless we wanna readvertise job, but I don't think we wanna do that.
Well, I have to bring it back to the board, create the position, then advertise.
Just retype this and put it in there like it's supposed to be.
You're talking about the, the student progression plan?
Question, is there any intent to use this alternative setting as a result of disciplinary action that might be taken? Because if it is, it's clearly an alternative placement in an alternative education setting.
That's what Ms. Brennan explained. So that's why I said that, so I don't know where we got from with the dropout, and again, I don't have a problem if it's ultimately for the student's success. I just would like the language to speak to it. My thing is if you're doing it and it's ultimately for the best interest of the student, why just you can't have language to speak to it? Okay, so that's what I'm saying. Can you just put the language in the document? Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, so we need to clean it up, right?
We're talk, we're talking about the progression plan.
Right. Okay, and that's, that's what we need?
That's all I wanted to know. I mean, I wasn't, had a problem with the teacher, I just wanted to know what we was doing.
Alright, so let's do that, and, um, and, and it needs to be clean and it needs to be clear. That's right. Anything else on that? Okay, um, as we move on, the next.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry?
Just a minute, just a minute.
Okay, uh, the next item.
No, 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 no. Now, so we had, we had pulled this.
I only pulled the personnel recommendation, cause I wanted to know what the teacher was gonna be identified as. We've identified. I don't have a problem with the position being pending tonight. Approved pending, we made a.
Motion.
Yeah, right, you need, you need to, we need to get that motion cleaned up.
My motion was for the plan, and do I need to add the additional motion? That's what I'm saying. Do we wanna approve him pending the language comeback?
I would think.
So that need to be two separate motions?
But it's two separate action items.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm motioning, the first motion, and I think Jeannie already seconded it, so we, you need to take a vote on that.
Your, your motion that you made is, have, have, has the, you got that motion?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so it's motion been made by Ms. Dunell and seconded by Ms. Mathis. Board, if you're, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry.
And my second motion is the position will stay at is pending the appropriate language come to the board in the progression plan. So I motion that we continue the, um, the appointment tonight for the, the position.
Alright, have a second. Uh, Ms. Mathis seconds that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. Alright. This brings us down to item fifteen point oh-two. Uh, this is a public hearing, the, uh, to approve the updated policies, so, uh, this is a public hearing. At this time, anybody who'd like to address this now would be your opportunity.
You mean, you don't wanna go through them one by one?
Well, we appreciate the, the, uh, the public and so forth. Uh, what's care of the board as we make a motion now to finally approve this. Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Agner seconds it. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carry. Uh, brings us down to the items of interest of the superintendent and board. Uh, let me, uh, say that, uh, Ms. Ball has requested an executive session, so we must, um, keep that in mind. So, Mr. Superintendent.
I'm very excited about the start that we've gotten off to in our school district. Um, things are running smoothly. The buses with the, the new pickup and drop-offs that we've had have ran extremely smooth, considering the amount of change. Always one or two parents that have concerns, but those have been addressed through Ms. Slaughter at the bus barn. Um, I do wanna say that had opportunity to speak to all the middle school students and the high school students, and give my vision of expectations for the district. Um, I felt like it was very successful. Wanna say that on behalf of Mr. Finley, which Ms. Brennan is here, do you wanna say anything about the high school, or would you like me to? Go ahead, I'm gonna let Ms. Brennan speak for Mr. Finley. They're having a volleyball soccer, I mean, a volleyball game tonight at the high school, so Mr. Finley is, is there at that with his daughter, so Ms. Brennan's here for him.
Yeah, grade level assembly last week, um, to go over rules of expectation and, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Mr. Wentworth came and he was attending and sharing his vision for our school district, um, and setting the tone for discipline. Last week, um, also played Lafayette last Friday, won forty-one, fourteen. We played on Friday, and we have a pep rally on Friday, um, to encourage that, and then we have a hundred and sixteen students enrolled this year, eighty-five with NFC and thirty-one with.
That is excellent.
Students we have on campus.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, six, seventeen.
And out of them, how many you have dual enrollment? So you can only dual enroll in tenth, eleventh, tenth, tenth, okay?
Um, Steen Hatchie School, Sting Rays have hit the ground running, again, as usual, under Mr. Bray. They've already completed their I-ready reading diagnostic and will finish up their math tomorrow. The district-wide emphasis on attendance is already paying off as well with a ninety-eight point three percent daily attendance rate for the current K-five enrolled students through the first seven days of school there, which is awesome. I want, um, Ms. McCall, if you would, tell us the good things that are happening at Big Ben Technical.
We hit ground running this year as well. We have five students who've already earned their Florida high school diploma. That's a big number for us. That's double what we had last year at this point. Um, and we anticipate additional six graduates within the next three weeks. Um, we currently have five students who are enrolled in the GATE program, which is GED's version of dual enrollment. So we're very proud of that, and these students are participating in building technology, milk art, and patient care technician. Our demand is continuing to grow. We have twenty-four students who are currently on the waiting list for GED, and our team is working at the graduation. Another big, another big note for GED, we're moving into Hatchie. I'm very excited to bring that back to our coastal community. Grabs will be coming in October. Signups will take place on September eighteenth from three to six p.m. Passes will take place on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday from five to eight.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McCall. And Ms., um, Gray, could you tell us about the primary school, and if you could, would you mention VPK and the award today?
Last week, VPK performance metrics were released. PPS, VPK scored an excellent, which is the equivalent of an A score for a school. Um, it's comprised of twenty percent of their scores from their VAS, and fifty percent are observations from the Office of Learning Coalition coming in, and they spend like two hours with them, with the teachers, going through their day, how they interact with students, all of that stuff. So huge kudos, I gave kudos at the back to school breakfast. Our preschool program is doing amazing things to help the primary and all the way up.
Yep.
Um, we successfully got afternoon pickup line down to under thirty minutes by the third day of school, which is a huge deal. Um, and I wanna give a shout out and thank you to all of the district staff that came over and helped with pickups, drop-off buses. Ms. Jill is still coming on the regular and helping with pickup line in the afternoon, but it has been a huge help for those of y'all that know. Lots of little people that don't know their names, can't tell you their teachers. It takes a, it takes a village to get them to class, but we've managed.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. It has been exciting. I know our people here at the administrative offices have been going over to the drop-offs in the mornings at the primary, elementary school, and exciting times, especially at the primary school for those kids, some of them first times ever leaving mom and dad, and, and it's been, been done very well and, and exciting um, for us to get, have the opportunity to go over there and be a part of it. I'd like, uh, Ms. Popple, if you would, tell us about the good old elementary school.
People stay all week, but we really wouldn't have made it. Um, my positives were all related to transportation, um, cause we didn't really have, we didn't get any good news from the state. Um, Ms. Wendy's team, I mean, I think by like the, we're used to weeks and weeks bus craziness, and I think by the third day, we were at two-thirty, I mean, cause we were holding kids, but they weren't like, they're here, they're here before the bell even rang, so, um, a shout out to them. Um, and in the mornings, it's quick, I mean, they're all in, um, and the parents, because of some diligent district people like Ms. Lacy and Ms. Sands, um, and Connor Moore, I know there are more, there was several. The ones, the parents have really gotten the routine down, so they're letting the kids out, and they're walking, and they've, um, realized that, you know, they can walk down the covered block way that the district had put up a few years ago. So it's been great. It's been a really good week and a half. The kids, it's great to see them. Um, everybody's really positive right now. Um, every time we've called the superintendent and he doesn't, you know, people quit answering my calls, I don't know what that's about. No, it's been a great couple of weeks, and I'm looking forward, we start testing next week for VAS, so.
I think Ann Elementary School would like to put a bug out, so we really wanna start school on Wednesday next year. By Thursday and Friday, our excited babies were exhausted babies. And there was lots of crying, getting them out of the vehicles, and then sleeping through class because they were wrapped.
And also, we hired some new people this year, but I was like, I have just, that's what I'm most excited about. They're all so excited. They're just, I mean, they're great people.
They're all on case.
So that's what I think is the most positive, and our, our veterans that have been around have really loved them enough, so.
Thank you, Ms. Popple. Ms. Roberts?
So I don't have people coming to my school to help us with getting their jobs. Mr. Wentworth has been there five days. Thankfully, great people, I'm in the back trying to get kids on buses and stuff. So, thank you to everybody that came, Mr. Wentworth. Um, we have grade level assemblies at our school last Friday, and Mr. Wentworth came to that, that was great. Uh, we got a good group of kids this year, so I'm really pleased with all of them. Um, our teachers were trained today, ready for the testing for next week, so we start that next week on Sunday, go to school through two. We are, I think I've said this before, but we are doing reading, first three minutes every day, every teach on campus, which has, we got a reading group, um, that we're reading all the same novel. Um, it's really a good novel, teaches a lot about empathy and stuff for students, so excited about that. I haven't read the book this summer, so. Um, don't quote me on that one. Um, we have volleyball game this Thursday at six o'clock and seven o'clock, if anybody can attend, and then we have, we had a thing, but next two days scheduled, but it's been canceled. We're gonna do a orange-blue game instead at the stadium at five thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is that everybody?
Are y'all keeping?
Okay, I do wanna say this.
Are y'all gonna keep up with the statistics on attendance for us?
I do wanna say this, that the back to school breakfast was a huge success. Um, our churches and, and local FCA people really do a great job of helping, and they fund it, they, you know, sausage biscuits, doughnuts, coffee, the works, it was just fabulous. And then having, uh, Mr. Russell Hughes from Walton County come in and speak to us the following Friday, such an inspiration. The guy's got an A district over there seven years in a row. He's a pastor. Um, they do things the right way. He's Superintendent of the Year in the State of Florida in twenty-four. So that was a really good day for all of our employees to hear him and the inspiration that he brings as to what they do over there in order to be that A. It's the old coach in me that if you see people around you being successful, let's pick their brains and find out what they're doing and incorporate some of that here. So that was, that was a really good day to, to have him here. Um, just excited for what our district's doing. I say it again, we have a great team. And again, I wanna throw out kudos to Ms. Slaughter and them at the bus barn. They do an incredible job with the limited number of staff that they have, and they should be commended every opportunity that we get um, for, for what they do for, for this district in, in hauling those babies back and forth to school. Um, I feel like there's something I'm forgetting here. But anyway, I'm excited and thankful for the team that we have, and, and it's gonna be a great year, there's no doubt in my mind, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunell.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I got it, I remembered. I wanna thank all of our sponsors for, that, that went in and, and helped purchase the T-shirts for everyone in the district. Didn't cost us a penny. Every employee in the district got a T-shirt. The sponsors' names are on the back of the T-shirt. We had different sponsors that, uh, gave us gift certificates and coupons, different restaurants in the. gave us gift certificates and coupons, different restaurants in the community. Everybody that we talked to reached out and helped us and supported us, uh, here in the district. And, and that's, that's just a sign of a great community. Everyone pulling together and working together for a common cause, and that's to educate our kids in a safe, healthy environment, and that's what I believe, and, and that's my story. I'm sticking to it. If you have discipline in your schools, you'll see every other part of your program flourish. And we're going to do that as long as I'm alive and breathing. I'm not going to allow one or two to keep twenty from learning. That's not happening. And I think that's the difference between a C and a B, and next year it's going to be the difference between a B and an A. So I'm excited about the direction and appreciate what this board does for us, and, uh, again, thank you to a great team.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Dunell.
Yes, um, just a quick question, um, in regards to the discipline matrix. Is something coming to the board far as twenty-five, twenty-six? Okay, alright. Um, and I do want to, um, again, thank our community partners. Um, it was great seeing all the pictures of our teachers and our staff, you know, being showered with, you know, the breakfast and the lunch and whatever and all that our community partners, um, presented. I know one day I was at the high school and it was a barbecue truck, and, um, the superintendent said that that was a new business that wanted to come and feed our teachers and our staff. So, again, I want to acknowledge our community partners and just thank everyone, you know, that, you know, love on us as a district and ensure that not only, you know, our students are supported, but most definitely the people that are out there doing a job for us, our staff, and making sure that they're being loved on. So, thank you to our community partners. Um, I also wanted to just, um, speak in regards to, um, the football pro, um, football game, um, Friday night. Um, I don't know, but it made me feel like ninety-seven, ninety-eight all over again. I mean, we was, it was packed. It was packed. Um, I think the community even was like, there was lines when I got there. I mean, and, I mean, it was lines. So, just to see, you know, the community, I mean, it just takes it back to the spring game. I think the superintendent over there was like, did we shut the community down because how many people came over for the spring game? But just to see the support from the community, and I just pray that we see that with all our sports, not just varsity program, but with all our program, and I think we will. And so it, it, it was just, it, I was like, wow, I haven't seen this type of crowd in years. So that, that made me feel good, um, Friday night, and just especially for our students, just the stance was packed. And then just the theme. I didn't know about the theme, but it was all because I hadn't been on Facebook that much, but I didn't even realize it was a blackout theme, but my daughters already came home and told me the theme for this week. So I don't know who's doing the themes with the football games, but it looked like we're getting some good participation for the community. And so that's, that's, you know, that's a good thing or whatever. Um, I've already heard about the volleyball game tonight and looked like it might be packed because I know, um, I've just heard already about people being excited about our different sports and activities. So, um, good job to the district for that. And then, um, I wanted to ask a question for, um, Ms. Roberts and Ms. Brandon's defense. Um, the Finley is not here. Um, last week, NFC had our back to school meeting because we started classes this week, but we have a new ag business program, a AS program at, um, NFC. And they were just reporting how their, um, instructors already in talks with Madison in regards to their ag program. So I just hope we don't miss out on that because I know for the last few years, we've heard such great things in regards to our middle school and high school ag programs. So I just wanted to put that out there, superintendent, um, that they got an ag business program, a two-year program that's going to start in January, so I hope we will be in contact with, um, that program and that department in regards to what opportunities are available for our students. I know I've already seen one of our recent graduates that was heavily active in the high school program. I seen her last week at the orientation. So I'm under the impression that there's going to be some capulation work. I know I said I was going to get with Shelby about it because I know Big Ben does a lot to support the ag, so I didn't know if there's already been some conversation there. But I just wanted to make sure I put out there that we do what we can to see how we make sure our students are aware of these local and regional programs for these different opportunities that we're offering at the K-12 level to make sure they transition well on the secondary. I also had a question in regards to, um, supplementals. Just a quick question. Um, I noticed that tonight, I think we did some approval in regards to basketball for the middle school. And I know we already approved basketball supplementals for the high school, but I didn't see anything for the girls' high school program. So is, are we planning to have a girls? Or is it just going to be to BA or something?
Yes, we're, we're working through that now, and it'll be on the next board.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure because I, I'm, I was anticipating all our programs going to be getting the attention that they need. So, um, and the extra hours, just real quick question. I did try to reach out, but Ms. Lacy was occupied, but there was a number of extra hours on here. So I'm, I'm just wondering, I know we asked at the last meeting, are we keeping up with what's all hitting the general fund far as extra hours? So, I don't know if Ms. Lacy.
So the only ones that Jill will cover with her grant funding is, uh, there's two on here that are possibly in there for family engagement nights. But like all of the free planning and all that, that'll be on the general fund.
Okay.
For the long-term selves.
Okay, and on here it said to pending their DOE certification. So, once they get certified, then it'll, it'll go on to title funding or something?
Only, only the one Jill has in her grants, the rest is still in the general fund.
Okay. Okay, so all the, because I seen where you had some for twenty-five percent and seventy-five percent. Okay, alright. Now with the mowing, is that in a, these hours, are these in addition to what we've already approved far as those three hundred hours, um, for maintenance? So that's what I'm saying. Is this for like the year, or is it just for the month of August? Okay, that's a lot of hours.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Agner.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Appreciate all that you do. Um, the game was wonderful. It was really fun, and I'm, we're looking forward to having a real good season. Um, I appreciate y'all letting us do this back and forth like we do up here and not getting too, you know, heated with it. We just have to ask these questions and have to get it straight, you know? Um, I look forward to seeing all the different activities that are going to happen at all the different schools. Apologize ahead of time, we can't make it to all of them, but it is a neat thing to see all that's going on in each school. And, um, Laura, that, hearing that about the primary or the pre-K, that's the foundation right there. And they, they might be twenty percent of the population, but they're a hundred percent of the future.
And those teachers are instructional, like, you know, they are, they are non-instructional. Like, and they're, they could end up much or more than that.
That's awesome. That's awesome. And of course, hearing about the bus doings, because I've had a caller too before it started, but I noticed the roads were just so calm when I go to work now, and you know, used to, it was like everybody was running, trying to get to work on time. Everybody's got plenty of time to get to work now. My one question, I've heard that like from seven fifteen to seven thirty, you got fifteen minutes to eat breakfast and get to class. Is that kind of working?
A little, little.
So, we're grabbing cereal, doughnuts.
They can't, they, they have to put their lunch cover in, and third graders don't put their lunch cover in, and it's, I mean, it's first to the numbers, they're. But it's, breakfast is rough.
Yeah.
But I'm glad that they were kids. Oh, no, we. Yeah. We all, they don't know. They're just missing class counts and feeding. So lunchroom staff is staying outside. At least there's something.
Wow, wow. But y'all have made changes with y'all tardies, right, Ms. Brandon? With the tardies, far as students being late to class? Yeah, it's, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, yeah, I've, yeah.
You done?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Mathis.
Well, that, everything, everyone said it's been a great start, and that, I was looking at the, a post the VPK teachers made of all of them together, and that is such a great, it is really a great group of little teachers. They, I mean, they are amazing, your VPK teachers, you, I mean, I didn't know this, but I was looking at their post last week, and they, they really are a hard-working, great group. All our teachers are, but they, it seems like they're, are they all, almost veterans at this point, or the majority of them are, are?
We haven't had any. Last year. But they're, they just.
Yeah, great team.
Those ladies work all summer. Like, if Ms. Amy says, hey, there's a webinar on whatever, I'll feed you dinner, they show up.
And so much, so much experience and knowledge, and, yeah, they're, they're amazing. So I'm really glad they got the A equivalent recognition. They certainly deserve it. Yeah, they do, and, um, so very excited about the, the, um, new year. Um, Steen Hatchie's busting at the seams. The school is down there. Our enrollment is up and scary up. So, um, we're, they're doing their best down there to hold tight to their numbers. And, um, I had just a great time at the football game last Friday night, and I was so proud of Deidre, your son did good, little D-Roe up there.
He's bad at ball.
And that, the one kid, I think his last name was Sweet. It was like.
Sweat, Sweat.
Is that Sweat? That was, that I couldn't, I couldn't tell, and we didn't, we don't have a roster anywhere, so I'm trying to catch it on the thing, but, um, boy, it just seemed like every time he hit the field, he did something that right, you know, to. But they all did amazing. They really all did. And, um, I am obviously looking forward to more talks about the historic landmark distinction for the Rock Building, and I feel like that's one of the really important things for us for the future that we as a board can do together. So I am looking forward to that, and I'll hand it over to Brenda.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, I just want to talk about football for just a minute, but, um, the tumble team was excellent. The band was excellent, and all those cheerleaders were excellent. It was just a lot of enthusiasm going on. You looked over at the concession stand and it was just packed. I mean, just packed. Uh, but just the, it's, I'm kind of like Deidre, it was back to championship time. The enthusiasm that's there, you know, the crowd participation, it's great. Thanks to our staff that's here. Uh, I've heard good things this year so far for starting off, and thank our community partners for, like, helping out with our back to school, and just look forward to a great year.
Our football field was, uh, awesome. Our little robot did the painting. I was out there, I was out there Friday morning, uh, as they were setting it up, and a couple of coaches were standing there while the robot was at work, painted the whole field. This week, this week, we'll have the logo. But that's, it's awesome. That saves us, saves Dan and them so much, so much time. Three hours and twenty minutes.
And it normally would be about eight hours.
Right by itself.
In, in, in three to four hours.
Oh, okay.
Once you got it done the first time, first time, it'd be eight hours.
I got you.
So as it goes, as it goes over the lines, will they get darker? Because they were a little bit light. Will they get darker and darker?
Just, it's going to be a beautiful Friday night. That's all I'll say.
I will see the logo Friday night. Okay, uh, have you finished, Ms. Carlton? Okay, thank you. I concur, uh, with all of the board members. A lot of things I could rehash, but time is getting away from us. It's good to be back. I've got, kind of knocked down for the last few weeks, uh, but we're hopefully back up going, and, uh, so it's good to be back in these meetings. Um, now, we do have a ballgame Friday night, right?
Sir, Port White at home.
Is it seven or seven-thirty?
Seven-thirty.
No, is it? Because we was told that last week, and we got there right at seven, and it was packed. Oh, okay.
Alright, so last Friday was seven, but this coming Friday will be seven-thirty. Okay, alright.
I about say, if you want a seat, you better be there before seven-thirty, because it was crazy.
Well, we appreciate everybody coming, and, uh, do I have a motion to second that we adjourn, remembering we do have an executive session. Will take three or four minutes, and then we'll turn Ms. Ball loose, okay?
I'm motioning.
Ms. Dunell makes the motion. Ms. Carlton second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? This board meeting's adjourned.